Ready Megan? Go down to the window.
No.
Hello.
Yes.
Now.
Okay.
For you or us? I just go.
Tell Margaret.
You can tell Margaret.
Then we will go. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Second please. Thank you.
Yeah. That. Uh, I can give you some. I would like to use this for my. A lot of it. Okay, very good question. You guys have all. This is. I'm ready. Yeah. We got the last. Oh. Can you bring it in?
Don't experiment any dirty way.
So.
Doesn't reflect that. Be careful. Or question. Alright, good evening. I will call these names order.
Your agenda for motion.
I'm open to your future agenda.
Okay.
All second.
A note from A, a second from Sanchez on favor.
At this time, we're going to do council report.
All my reading, we've been working on it for a couple of days for the order of the virus countless, personal form of our own relationship with the officers. In the incident on Saturday night. On the way their life on the line. Also want to think the part that is there. Other than that, same pretty busy at some of the school we had constantly maybe agency what it right is me and just like we did not too long ago, we're also probably going to go through approximately 18 measures regarding the overdraft and so that's something that I would say we haven't decided how we can help people which is part of the process or something without fault because we belong to that sustainability agency, something that we need to learn from when company, when we start company from fall 11, if we do overdraft, we get the funding and so for those of us that are not aware, our central value floor is is sinking subsidence because of the open field, so the state has created a plan to open, change in that water to the best foot of the cost of the support. Also attended the grand opening to develop the nonprofits, the frizzy golf, we appreciate the community members that contributed to making that happen, staff as well, it was a, it was a great, fun, very, fun. And then also participating in national out, I think some word, some California working, always comes with the morning flood and then I don't know. I've been touring, always tour, things. Letters out for some of the properties that the clients, so I've seen a lot of the people in front, so I appreciate the staff that have been sending letters out, makes a difference when they're driving around, it's just, it's a little more easier than that. I also have a coaching football, Lindsay represented the city at Carnival and the more Fall Valley last time and this Saturday is hopefully an easy, easy football cheer if you'd like to go this week, first thing at 11, all day, all day, it's a real event, it's on the family, so come on up. Other than that, I look forward to the rest of A dot com and all this.
Hello, good evening. Um, I also couldn't actually make out, um, I got to stay a little bit longer because I kept getting on jobs. Um, it was a really good turnout, it's, it's a fun night, it's beside all of this that we've done before, um, they, there was a lot of wrecks from the police and fire and they made a lot of hot dogs and there was food everywhere and we're happy. Um, I went to Stephanie's going away party, or her going away lunch, it was bittersweet, but most super proud of her. Backpack gave away that Healthy Start hosted last Friday, it was a really successful event, um, next time I will let you guys know, that time they wanted to make, um, clothes, shoes, um, old toys, I didn't think of it until I saw all the community members coming in and I mean, these kids just per perversity, they were so happy and I mean, they're used, definitely used, but, um, and they took, all those boys are so good, so next time they're hosting one, I think it's an auto golf fair over, so you guys, some fun with that, I think all about it all the whole, that was really awesome, I can't wait for it, it's, it's so cool. Um, I, we also attended the frizzy ball, um, Red River and cutting. What was his name? Frisbee Hall. Okay, so how popular was that one? A lot of people went there, like, I've never seen them, man, they, apparently they come from all over the place to play it and they, they were very, um, they were really cool, like, I was asking questions, like, what is this spot, how you do it? And they said, right, it's pretty, it's really good courts and it was, it was just really cool here and I don't know what else I could have said, but thank you for being here. I don't have nothing to report, but I do want to say the carnival is looking very nice and every time I pass by it's really awesome. But it looks so different, like, I, I just look so different and I just can't.
Thank you, I realized, I'll try a little short, see, I do want to say my apologies to the people who saw my opportunity to guys do this all there. Chief, I appreciate you for giving the information, we do, I do appreciate that. I attended the movie night, was it something, Di, you screaming or something like that, I liked to do that, I did the disco for me, I did Stephanie's for a while before you guys, I need time to try to, I want to. Um, I, I attended the Healthy Start meeting, it's called Healthy Family, Healthy World Day, as she was saying, it means so much for our community, they really help out our communities, basic resources from laundry detergent, bleach, um, toothbrushes, odorant, which is a must in my classroom, um, and stuff like that, they really help out. I, I attended the cruise night, the national eye out, it's always good to be community jump together, I love it, and so I just, I just, I mean, all of these parties are having so much fun, so I appreciate that. Um, I did the D B Z community coalition meeting, which stood up, I haven't lived in a while, but stood up now, all the things that are going on in our community and outside the community. Um, I spoke, I spoke at the classified P, not as a, but as a, as the mayor, so I'm a little, a little jaded, you know, I can't even pass my employees, but spoke at that. Um, I had a room to the senior center, which is always amazing, making it was a dream, so I'll bring that, um, uh, to Lindsay, help them out. And then I did the adult ed sign up, which I'm, I'm a part of, but I also kind of worked as the mayor, so promote, you know, being your husband's diploma. Yeah, upcoming for me, I have C D A and C S R T A next Monday, I also wanted to promote the Kuanas is having a reverse frog dinner on Saturday, October 4th, for the longest dinner, it's a hundred dollars a couple, is it single tickets? Or is it just a hundred dollar? One ticket, two people, hundred dollar, please go out and support. And lastly, I just want to say Happy Saturday of school for Lindsay, may everyone have, have fun and safe and productive year, that's it, that's all I have to say. So we're going to move on to the public comment. Public is invited to comment on Instagram together in search of addiction of movie city alcohol. Please note that the speaker that wishes to comment on a regular item or a public hearing on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to speak when the public comment for that item is requested by mayor. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person with 30 minutes for a whole comment period, unless otherwise we feel the name is clear. The public, we choose to submit a comment before the meeting via email, other comments received email will be distributed to council by the starting meeting and incorporated into the official minutes, however, they will not be read aloud under state law, matters presumed under the public comment cannot be acted upon by council at this time, so that is I will take you home to college. Pretty good, I was very scared, I'm also excited about the Yallos Bowl, and I tend to pass by there and even though it, before it looks small to me, now it's actually a lot bigger, so I'm excited about that. I'm here representing the community center of commerce, we're going to be having a big potato sale on Monday, August 18th, only $13 ticket, and we're doing it with the city, so we really need the city to come out of it and buy those tickets if we're here. I know that some of you won't be present in helping us out that day, so it's Monday again, obviously, but if you guys is doing something for the first time, we're having a community yard sale, you know how you have so much stuff in your home and you probably get rid of it, even though there is a great place, the Happy Start, but we're doing that on Monday and it's going to be, um, August 23rd, I don't know if it's a Monday, it's a Saturday, it's a Saturday, now I'm thinking about the day sale, okay, it's Saturday, August 23rd and it's going to be in the parking lot where no former back of America is on the other side and starts at, um, actually 7:00 a.m. and ends at 2:00 p.m., but we're going to be offering up at 6:00, 6:00 a.m. So, um, we've also, uh, so that if you're interested in having a roof, it's $10, uh, and the rest is yours to sell. And it's the idea, the whole idea is to, uh, be part of something that's, uh, that's needed, instead of seeing some of your stuff, they're going off, someone's junk might be someone's, right? It's not that it's junk, it's just that we don't need it anymore, you know, I have a breadwinner that I haven't used in years, but it's probably someone I could, so, um, again, that's, um, Saturday, August 23rd, it's a New York sale, it's being sponsored by, so we're in the way of the, 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 thank you, thank you. Do you have any other public comments? All right, no more public comments, but what we thought are through at this time. At this point, uh, I'm going to have to see the manager for you, I'll see that.
Good night, Mayor, have a few things to report on, um, because the Yallos Bowl was very good, uh, you guys did, uh, down that very well with that, uh, as we remove their holes and applying the so, uh, maybe a couple of the holes from, I don't know, that's odd that that allows us to get a lot more of the, that's holding up a lot of work, um, so they've done great work, um, continue to progress, tailoring will, from the backstop to the, we'll be, uh, are continuing to move forward, all the troops have been planted, um, they're air watering, some of them a little bit distressed and they don't make it in their, they go places, uh, but there's, one of the, I like the color that, the, like the pathway, that rock path, that, that brings us all towards faith, uh, looking at moving to the next phase of the parking lot, um, in fact, and all whole, ultimately, uh, moving forward with, uh, the actual playground. Uh, so, uh, waiting on something for the, 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 spent all of the, have three separate lots of funding for the Yallos Bowl, uh, from the United, so, so, you know, that's a, for the city, uh, the Calprens, uh, provided to France, that all that extended, kind of wanted to save parts, all the, uh, provided grant funding, so, yeah, it follows, it's a part of that, so, okay, so, 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 uh, it's going on, going on quite well, so, we're ready for, uh, summer, then we'll play ball, uh, spring and, uh, hopefully, uh, some youth sports, but I don't, I won't jump too far and, uh, uh, also, uh, met internally with our contractor, we, uh, reported for our grand center design last week, so looking to find out, um, what's space, how we can utilize it, in terms of recognizing, won't be having sore rail turning stops there, sure, but that's, um, part of the, the why it's focusing for, a lot of that, ability for that, so just making sure that we're going to, uses, um, for other needs that city have, even though it is still considered, or how can we get the best out of that, that's also, we got quite a bit of funding for that, get over time, follow that as well, that we will receive multiple grant funds, uh, who men are, uh, a lot of that, maybe also big money, there was some funding from high school rail, well, um, so, all of that kind of combined, another thing for the city. Um, there is looking to see, uh, this Thursday night, I think it's still that I'm planning, the, uh, council member, six o'clock at the hotel, um, let's go after, uh, certain things, that, you know, register to last, but. And to, and, and, um, we also, since our last meeting, um, we, uh, the state, one resource that told or formerly who, uh, our well 11 grant, um, so they have, we have seen the paperwork at the last, uh, council meeting, I have signed the paperwork, uh, safer, there. This time, twenty dollars, um, so we are in the process of putting that on the document, um, I think we're also going to, uh, do a, some further analysis of the well 11 size of this, sort of, uh, appropriate size of the filtration system, and making sure that it's going to generate water that, uh, that's big, that's going to be necessary for that, so, um, once we get all that, that, we'll, under that council, we're, we're, we'll go out and, um, put that out there, but our goal is to have that, um, that project complete, you know, years, so, uh, there's a workarounds, we got, we got three years to spend, uh, funding and then leave the project for the state, but I think the Yallos Bowl, we need the water a lot sooner, uh, than we, over the, which, are a little, uh, done quicker, but we're also going to make sure that, that we get everything done, I am sure we don't have to go back. Um, there's been a, um, few other things, but I want to turn it over to the chief, um, he's got an update on our fire situation, have folks, uh, out helping, assisting other parts of the state and for Lindsay, and after that, it's been, and I'm not used to seeing your fire in this form, but it's kind of, you know, every time I glance over it, I'm hounding everybody off, I drove the fire and it swarmed, so I can't still move in. Uh, yeah, so, uh, it's come from Victoria, uh, earlier, earlier, we got it through out on the, just on the curbside, I had to close fire, um. Love being able to offer assistance, uh, it's definitely changed the pace for us, uh, that one, kind of scratched our head up, but we heard the fire, um, and so they were kept there for about four days and then like, we figured they would be there when we signed the fire, so, that's, uh, over a hundred thousand acres, uh, relatively small, so I would expect very, that out, twenty one days, from when they left, so that maybe they were on fire, we'll be back, uh, at some point for a rest, or, uh, and then we'll back, but, a lot of them, had very, especially a lot of ours, uh, lots of things for, for pride, that's our final, that's, it's going to be this, um. Um, as for Saturday evenings, I couldn't decide anyone, uh, here, to be aware of what happened, but in short, it's, it's all, two, uh, sound down. We're involved to sound down. Part of the area hands. We, it was two man units. Lawson and Stink. And they were starting out. Just after, yes, on Saturday. Kansas. Gentlemen. One year old gentleman, Stratmore failed to stop at his book stop sign. The officer, the driver did the same to the police. Or at least fifty, how bad that would be. Because of several factors, including how it closes. Pulled out in front of them, struck. All those people was getting rest on the private side. There was a second meal behind, and thankfully there was a lot of. For type factor, that's another set of officers left behind there. Contributed to the outcome of that, for sure. That fire. That's put out. Oh, pick the dog. Vehicle. And also to check on the other drivers as well. Big little wilding here, driver out. And they provided, probably in part of both. Our officers both on J L seven, monitoring, controlling, all parts. Officer, that was staying broke. That's sort of, that's important. Better thing for their spirits. A little bit more comfortable to live by. Their, 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 their. Confidence coming back. See Andy, but. Broke papers, take a while. It's a perfect, probably. Over the wild departments. Was involved from R E B C, well, it's all. See for that, please, 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 you're leaving your stuff. We're also helping. It's kind of a piece of voice. Appreciate the work that it's done for all of us. With that, that concludes my.
Thank you, guys. Who wants to recommend to the chief? Tell me.
Alright, this came here. So a lot of exciting things happening in the fire division. We talked about. Again, it's a great forum for our neighbors to send sort of that family is very extreme. Prove something we're doing. And so unfortunately for the Art's Wolf, this can be your brand here. He's all by himself today. And it's, it's a patriot that was promoted from lieutenant that is out finding the fire right now. It's, it's a one man show for him today, but we're, we're excited. Those of you who are under pressure. Brendan P S is dedicated, dedicated to the fire service. I was past three years probably serving in fire department. Outside of working in those vision, you can't, uh, create a last member. As the department's communication manager, it's a vital role and obviously radio system outside. His commitment to service has been recognized as the life saving foundation for action during a medical fall for traumatic injury. Passion about mentoring, passionate about training, caring fellow firefighters. Brendan also works with strong platform. With mutual partner, ensuring, ensuring the highest level of service. He's been a fantastic team. He's always willing to help out. He's outside of the badge training. So. And we're happy to deal with work yard. A random, really mentor. It's also part, part of the work. Three shifts that are led by certified company office. So without further ado, I'll ask this, that random moment. Please swear to. Thank you for this opportunity, manager. For serving.
Thank you. I'm going to give it to you. Yeah.
No trip on us.
Thank you. When we get on to the consent calendar, looks in items approved in one most unless an item is full for discussion. There will be no separate discussion of these barriers unless the request made will reach, with the event. The item will, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar to be discussed and voted upon by separate motion. Where I will mostly approve consent. I have a most consent. Thank you for our tutorial, all favor. Moving on to the public hearing, for two point one. Recycling collection at four sixty West Promesa at American Division, Mrs. Green, like Christine Chavez. Oh, I'm opening this up without telling you.
Perfect. Write your presentation down. Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman St. Todd. The item for you is a English one, spirit, three hundred five four. Last by the door in broadway to sound. The part of occupation is at four sixty West Promesa Street. I'm going to probably put it supposed to be the gate. It's not, it's a own excuse. And it's consistent of the general by news designation of excuse. The property is exact, unsupplied, but I don't think it's true. The applicant proposes a ball, stands and possibly units for recycling. And admission of approval will ensure that proposed product is compatible with surrounding uses and that is that. And all this through the resolution. So again, here's a public location. So that words, the proposed product, we can be pointing to West Promesa, we have the front. Know the limits right in the middle. Our two existing recycle centers in the city. Most of the two that you see with the major green logo. This is this proposed site plan, it's submitted by the applicants. And you see the entry off of. Like Ashland. Coming in off of Ashland, that way it's up. And then it would come in, it would be a vehicle at the recycling area and do with it. Okay, get off the ass. This has been done through the. And simply make sure the ground is. Interesting, nothing. So there's a lot of visions of the food most of it was. That's not, you know, makes me remember. So just to call out some of the very specific ones worth mentioning. They would be off, they're required, it proves they're required to operate in accordance with their operational standards. The force I include this to occur, non-operable vehicles, its hires will draw a safety. Put front of the cycle, visible. They would need to add privacy slats to the fire that sits on the property. On a daily basis, the site shall be free of litter, debris, spillages, or similar desirable hazards. The site improvements will require all clever driving tools, so there's not going to be. Our top one has given a hundred percent. Recycling materials shall be covered properly, stored, moved, and less than two days. So there will not be a commerium of recycled goods. An excessive. No recycling center operates up with a wondering campaign, public banking consumption alcohol uses. Only with my how it's turned into the black thing, which you're asking for. Over any other suitable which best. Within the lawyer in sign, onsite storage containers must be loaded on empty slab. And which shall be, you can see what you put on, it won't be right. Building on consent. Is a. And then combines with the other, it's just perfect. Mission of the people should be, they stop following you for six months, twelve months, and then yearly thereafter. So I'm going to turn it back to make sure they're compliant with the. For any conditions, if not, there are all season quotes available to address those concerns. Not that just one, you may be the removal of their. So any problems of the ordinance or current conditions where it was on that suspension of use coming. And if I, you would be not by protocol, it's. Then the rule. And then any extra signs would also have to go through the city staff. So if I report you to the public hearing, if you are designed, we consider.
I just wanted you to get a picture of where we do that. Is, is this right now the auto mechanic place?
Yes.
A business will be removed from there. Yeah, so on the screen. Okay, yeah, I didn't see it on the screen, but that is the, the auto mechanic shop. So you're leaving or?
It's going to just be a portion.
A portion, okay, so there's some, it's just my, thank you.
So I'm wrong, no more. Probably a two sixty from over the road. Going to the, and barbecue stand, smoke shop, and I'm not in favor of this. Because the thunder cans in, in your store, the toilet pack or whatever. He hanging out of my place all the time. Did you, I couldn't hear you at all. You already have others recycling places in town? Yes, there's two. What do we need another one for? That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, we just, I hope, right behind. Was speaking with all the tenants up there, both Ron's and mine. There's a big. They don't want it there, they feel like it's going to be. If you're there, you see the homeless, you see people going to the dialogues, something like that. You just feel like it's going to be. Not, not against business. It's one of our main drives in town, it's our main career. That everybody comes in through the city, to the city. And we feel like we have big few places where else. Not only the business, but on that, just the vocation. When you guys drive, anybody that drives to town. They see all these problems, which is hard to be, aesthetic, you know. We don't, we don't, it's a good, a good, for that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more to comment?
Basically, everyone just said, that's the way to do that. That's the minimum one to say. You have a recycling center. You mentioned. Those recycling stations is not involved as you can judge. You're going to have something beautiful, you know. In that, going to people, and they're not that completely lost. Wow, it is. That is a thing of. No, no, that's. You know, that's key, it'll be said, wish. If you have your self control there. And as the gentleman said, we need to notify, to be, and as people who are there coming into the town. Want to show our best face. Not yellow. That's good.
Thank you. Do you have more to comment, sir? I can know what, what was in thought. I agree with all these new people, it would not be a good site to have a recycling center, yeah. Thank you. You're welcome, one more. At this time, public hearing is closed. And so you want to ask, you need to kind of ask for.
For indoor concrete, like currently?
No, it's, I'm probably.
Is there slits now currently?
There are.
Okay, so where is it?
There are hires might need the order of events and so. Which is a team of folks, most people hires.
So that, so that they're not being very celebrated, does?
They're discussed, also there are a number of seemingly not operational variables. And so it would be more of a, also, slats, we got some kind of seat.
So when, just, it's the concrete, the slats, and then. People tell what's fair.
Correct, well, I mean. Yeah, and there, this is what the site plan was like. And so you can see at the top left, there's a, there's a train, and then there's some cluster eight. Facilities out in the right part of there.
And so it's, that means not on the motor, right?
Correct.
The address is on the motor, but it's not, right?
Right, the entrance would be on that.
So I'm standing in front of the door, I see. The, the address.
If you're on Promesa, you would see the tire.
So we need to get a seat.
It's like a service station. You see, there's a small shop, I mean, you can, you can. There's a small shop, there's a building probably in a portion of the center of the building, or the awning. That is where the speakers had to do cars. And then a building off to the east.
For more than half, for more than half of the block. Is it both for any Promesa?
It's, it's pretty open, so there's not a lot of. There's a building on the, about the center west side.
Like, is this an auto shop, right?
Yeah, those are the.
Four sides doing the, like you said, the center. So with slats, plus the building, plus the concrete, plus the slits, all of that.
No concrete.
No concrete?
No, right, you said asphalt?
It's kind of asphalt. Maybe a paint all weather.
Oh, it's always. There's no concrete. But.
Yeah, well, it's, it's.
So there is any company?
The company added, added the company somewhere, still monitoring, you see the. They're having a panel, microphone color. In that slab, to be able to see it. At the corner, partial. The building permits, and so, on property. This is like.
I'm not positive, but the all weather, it's your goal.
It'll be probably, no, on top of asphalt, it's. Is there any animal on the premises?
No.
No.
And is this the only place they can put this? Or is it?
So what they do, they submit applications, they have to get the property owner's uh. Approach, and they have to. It's getting better, but they may possibly.
Yeah, so it was based on an allegation, and then we just passed the. We don't say, oh, you should pick this site, or you should pick this site.
Okay, exactly, my concern is not about like, yeah, visibility, or that, my concern is about the smell. Like, me, I don't care what you do that, it's not good, and there's a lot of businesses, owners, I've been here for a long time, I've heard of you, you know, that's probably good to, to actually be, everyone, so that's my concern. And the upkeep. So the upkeep, like, you know, we, we approved one already, and so I'm not too fond of the way that one looks, and I don't want that one to be looking like the way. It, the listing board is looking, so, that's just my concern, you know, I mean, I understand, I'm just, I have the people that spoke, that, that communicated to me, and um. I don't know, I mean, I'm like, I'm not against this, I'm just not for the, I just don't think that's the proper placement for that one.
Could you want to also just point out, for the sense of the issue with the football, the site shall be that free of litter, debris, smelling, bugs, rodents, and other. That's common.
Yeah, yeah, that's very good.
Hey, we will find an opportunity.
So, I don't know, do you guys have any more to say, of the, of mine, um, I think, I think that's the best spot, that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah. I mean, one more. One more danger.
Uh, the public danger is close. Sorry. Uh, go ahead, you ready?
Well, it's not, it's both are all just. It's consumed, wow, but is it, but well, no, uh, no, no. It's not even. And wire. The premises not to be all around us. Can I follow this up?
No, I, I think while councilors uh, uh, thinking about this, and, and hearing the public test along with the ones, I think that from a process standpoint. Proceeding in general, like it all goes there, from a staff standpoint. If council is uh, is approving it, these are the conditions that are required, however, on the same token, um, you know, we're just processing the application. But we would do this for anybody, right, we wanted a, a proposal, at different sites, at the same site, or whatever the process is in the process, so. Um, it's not necessarily to say that, uh, that this is something that we are advocating, but we're just providing the facts to you, so that you guys can respect. So. Who perceived the vote forward, and heard some, some comments about some of the other recycling centers, so, I know that staff is interested, um, with doing that, but that group are also, uh, producing some, uh. Um, this one is for minutes, and so making sure that, that we do actively support them, um, for those, but as well, there's not much specific this tonight, um, looking at them. During the course of. We also reviewed and looked at if there were physical conditions that could be required, and based on discussions that, that, um, we, uh, we exhausted that it. Kind of put everything out on the table, just like, well, if it was necessary for this.
And if you want, please just to clarify about. Uh, everyone within three hundred of their business, or, or of the address is notified of this meeting, and so that you have a lot of, um, especially as a landlord here. Um, also, you have a two thirty days after the public hearing.
That, right, but so that could be, they're always defer, um, when they say, they're not ready.
Yeah, I think that's a simple. Uh, you know, when I know. If, we have a meat shop, honestly. Right, we have a liquor store across two, two schools, or, it's out here, it says here, right, and we decided to school, we can see signs that say here. That's okay?
I don't, I think that's like.
So, we gotta let them off the side, right, if, if our residents feel like, like, this is not necessary, they won't use it, simple as that. Right, simple enough, supply and demand, right, approve it, and if it doesn't work, they'll finish it down, right? We don't have that many excuses, places, that are simple and easy, right, that's why we wanted to help us, that's why we want to make sure that we, we maximize each part of that, right now, so they can walk, right? With mostly the cars, the security, right, you can't see it from a most of the, what are we going to do about it now? Uh, we are in progress, they're gonna put out the application, or the early product application, they're gonna send the fees, they're gonna offer improvements, they're gonna pay the taxes, they're, they're gonna do all of that. And what are the market design, right, you wanna make sure that we're. Giving credit to all the people, right, and I wanna make sure that they was owners of that, uh, I don't feel that shit, it's like, now. We're gonna be, we're gonna be very shit, you can very shit, you can check that on, right, thirty, six months, there's, 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 as city council members, like, I do, you go around, I'm so far, this is. Request, it's like, hey, that's not me, my studies, right, it, there is, there is too much agency from my, there's not, there's, there's, there's been that up for you, we can review it, and we can undo it. Uh, just like, I hope in the future, we can undo some of the signs that say here, from.
Do you have to help, help any people?
Uh, you know, that would mean, and that's, that's from on campus, to have this kind of requirement. Because I'm, I don't go from the door that way, because maybe it's useful, it's gonna be close to the class, I mean. So the difference is that cluster, um, and that's just like, nobody is supposed to, I'm not always watch there, but if, if you didn't see people with. Cars, all of, cars and bottles, going through, um. Not there, I think, I'm not.
I agree, and I don't think that's the proper place, I could say, I don't know, please. I do work for the business, so I'm not against recycling, and I'm, and it's your location, I really. You, you want to? I mean, I think, it's not, it's not like. Uh, and with the slats, you're not gonna be able to see what's in there, you're just gonna be able to see, from what I understand, right? So it's gonna be private, and you might be able to see it, so it's strange, I mean, we put a lot of conditions, and, and I appreciate everything that you did, but that's just, that's a lot of conditions that they have to follow. And, and I, I completely understand what you guys want to come down, because you're, you know, driving in, but right now, I guess, for weather, there's like, cars that have been there for years and years, and there's a lot of tires, and a lot of junk, and, you know. Um, I just, right, either way, I mean, like I did, this is, I'm all for the business for the account, that's, you wanna grow, but I, I think they just, the visual, maybe that's. Maybe any of this are, maybe the different business, like, whoever's like, I don't know.
Only when you're.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, yeah, why you tired?
That's not on the.
That's your.
Yeah.
So I think that's how she's not saying.
Yeah, you.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Think if it was all covered, but we don't.
Yeah.
On the. And just because we approve the people that, on the. They, they, so. They might need, they might need a condition. Well, at least, at least the city is focused on this, and the business sizes, and the opportunity to work in for us, which we don't have.
I agree here, this, there's one, I, I hope councilor is sorry to did, uh, take a motion to approve this application, um, so, council, that, um. That's all, and probably decides what they want to do, either that motion is the second to move forward, or someone else can, uh, if it dies for last second, then, uh, someone else can have a new motion. So there is a motion for. Second, or someone has been tied for last second.
I opposed it, uh, I'm gonna go now.
Well, that's. We need to, we need to check, give the.
Second.
Okay. For uh, council, but, yeah, not, not in time, but.
I will step in.
Okay, so there's a motion by, uh, uh, councilor of Florida, to approve the application, for the, for the, for the. Now you can have further consent.
Somebody has to run this okay name.
Or you can.
Yeah, I don't know, no.
Uh, let's see, yeah, let's just go off. Let's see, so, I'll go, uh, I'll go down the, councilor of Florida.
No.
Mayor of.
No.
Councilor number eight?
Number, yes.
Councilor of Florida?
Yes.
Councilor of Texas?
Yes.
What was your fastest three? Alright, uh, we've got, uh, new items, and we'll turn it over to a.
You keep going, me?
The mayor's ready to.
I heard you saying a. This is what it's all about, I don't know, you got anything, right? Um, that's good, and I'm.
So, I appreciate. Wait, can I have one? Hold on, I heard this.
Thirteen.
Thirty, three, oh, three, yeah, thirty. Alright, to the meeting, council, public, um, so, beginning this year, um. We talked about Lindsay sports, bringing more to Lindsay, bringing sports, um, the council was a favor of that, um. Councilor number, uh, Dave, myself, Stephanie, um, Mr. Seager, and the school, the A D, and, um, Frank, um, the asshole coach, we met. Many times, um, we kinda have a game plan, what we wanna do, what, what's needs of Lindsay, um, sports wise, we do want to compete with other sports in the communities, um, both soccer, and football. Um, so, we did come up with a couple of sports. First thing is, uh, what is some L C sports, um, L C sports, L C sports is a, a crap effort between the city of Lindsay and Lindsay High School, they said, they got, and you have to read. Marcus Dave, and there's sports, foster and physical activity, teamwork, and skill development. So that's our main goal in this whole thing, um, and it's different than other sports in the community, more competitive, more recreational, more nerdy, fundamental, ancient stuff. Uh, math or much intensive, even though it's not good or, uh, law intensive, um, so we're just trying to make it fun, listen to the sports, um, love the sport, if they love it or not, they have an opportunity to. Take part when they're younger, and then go from there. So which sports will be offered, so these are the four sports, um, after many meetings, we chose, so we have youth basketball, uh, we're gonna do that in the winter time, January-ish. Um, and then we have youth baseball and softball, that would be in spring, um, at the same time, at our beautiful new. Um, and then youth volleyball will be in the summertime, if it is extremely hot in the summer, um, we chose volleyball in the summer, that even indoors. Um, and the good thing about the basketball and volleyball, we're invited to school district facilities at no cost to the city, as a partnership, so that's a plus. Uh, we did get a lot of feedback in the group, um, you know, compared to everything, but the parents, uh, did complain about pain each time. Uh, so this will be a free entry to your basketball game or volleyball, um, and the same thing with our, uh, baseball and softball, it's a free entry. We're not gonna be charged at the door, we're not gonna be, you want people to show up, be welcome, enjoy our facilities and. So, what is cost per view, um, so after going back and forth, back and forth, uh, we finally decided, um, and I'll explain to you this, so. Our basketball registrations, kind of groupers, um, are, yeah, they are our T K and A grade level, um, so the medals, they will take part for four weeks, um, most likely on a Saturday morning. Um, about an hour long, those two journeys, the medal was for stations or rotate, um, and then our youth, we still have eight games, and now we did it all, so it doubled. Uh, so I'm trying to make it affordable, uh, to the community, uh, the five rows will be around here, uh, for youth sports. And then taking the baseball and softball, kind of leaders, one five, you play pick. Volleyball, uh, kind of spikers, and you play penny price. And then budget wise, uh, so what is the budget, um, expenditure, this, this scary, but don't worry about it.
We're already kind of excited and proud, so, yeah.
Like, you really do learn also.
Hold her before it's.
So. So, uh, basketball, I'm looking about thirty thousand, baseball estimates, we haven't done this before, it might be lower, but they're, most likely gonna be lower, um, not higher. Um, so basketball, thirteen thousand, baseball, softball, forty six thousand, volleyball, nine thousand, staffing about thirty seven. About thirty thousand of the costs is start costs, so equipment, um, everything started about thirty thousand. So next year, if you continue with the program or sports, you're gonna have maybe seventy thousand or less, so. Along with baseball and softball, you're looking at about twenty five, thirty thousand dollars, um, start costs, that's equipment, counting for the players, for the facility, um, so, yeah, so, don't have a hard deck. And then income, um, income is funny, uh, newer estimated numbers, so basketball, we've got ninety five hundred, baseball, softball, twenty two thousand, volleyball, nine thousand, and then for the full district, um, seventy thousand, they're gonna be shifting it. So, we're looking at a possibility of five thousand in the black, um, and that's with every single senior school, the district, um, that, that's the number we're looking at. And that's my, if you have any questions, concerns, if you wanna add or see, um.
It's exciting, um. We're excited, um excited.
I'll just carry aside. So we did discuss that, um we're gonna. So what we're gonna, we're thinking about doing, uh because I'm going to have a second year, I think we just want to get this all in first year, is possibly having sponsorship forms. Um where we can to the coach and coach to handle our business, so then we're going to back to the city. Um and then we will go to, you know, away with that and have that business name print on the back of it. Um I think the first year we're kind of go slow, then the second year we sponsor, he bad while we go. Um yeah, we just leave it out, given that, uh having a push without it, get sponsored and then that will set.
Uh so one of our, one of our goals is to basically give them when you're little and you're not going to visit, we're just going to. Move soccer and the obvious kind of that. Then and then this is kind of what we're, we're, we know we're going to have the littles, but we just want to give them out there and involved and, you know, this is something that I've been. You know, my mom knows how I feel like it, so we're really excited and we just want to be able to.
As far as coaching, well, that's. So the head coach and the assistant coach would be. Um I know I spoke to the Nessa regarding the price and all that kind of stuff, um so that would be something with TK wants to finalize everything. Um they would pick up the last stand form through us, and then um somehow we would either have certain days where there was some. Yeah, pretty, um we haven't worked that out yet, still remember. They would have. City activities, um in my ability purposes, which definitely they didn't. I just, I just appreciate that because it's uh that I'm already one, where especially for our children sometimes. They don't play in, they're in games, so there's a lot of that that happens with the head coaches that I had with myself, and so I really appreciate that. In all of those book, um there we go, have chat, so we don't have a first person team over without the parents, although. Either one of you guys have to step up or who's had a field refund. Maybe that works in parents.
And we also, we also talked about um having like, you know, kids at our high school um come in and work. And give them uh so that they can have a, you know, make a little bit extra money and either threats or umpires or whatever it is, so. So we also added that in there, so that that gives us some work, but it was, we want to make that a little bit extra money, so. Thank you.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, you know, maybe, maybe there's a um that helps a lot, um. Thank you for your effort, I'll be coming out and cheer you up. It's very sad because I obviously, so. O- obviously, I, I would happen to to go. Very sports, but when I was growing up, it was very important that you had sports. It is something that I'm questioning about, and I think it's a sport as, as a coach, as a volunteer coach, and I want to give a meaningful effort, it's something that, that really. Is an investment in our future, it's an investment in our safety, if there wasn't youth sports, a horrible youth sports going up, I probably wouldn't be here, I probably would have made more. Poor decisions than I already did, and so I really appreciate that, the entire staff, the entire partnerships, the uh the staff that I use. Any law, it's something that, that I'm going to support. Our leadership, so I look forward to. Thank you.
One to go.
A billboard? Maybe a little more than half a box, but. Break the word.
Was that fourteen point two?
Again, you're right.
Yeah, I need a.
I haven't gone up. Um I present fourteen point correct.
Wait, what was one, wasn't it?
Fifteen point one, fifteen point two, I can present together.
Yeah, okay.
Next two actual items. Um.
Wait.
Well, there, there's the presentation prior to.
Oh, there's, okay.
So then there's.
Okay, are you going to run it? Right, no. There is.
I'm sure there's something else. Oh, this is.
Yeah.
So it looks.
Really. The fourteen point one just was a negative.
Alright, so let's kind of go again, uh we're going to be running youth sports, we were, we're staff. Um so I'm presenting tonight on hoping to um add to our. Our uh staffing, um. What's the word?
To new job sites.
New, what's the word, uh you have to be stable, but they are. They're on there, um so sports coordinator and sports official um are needed for Lindsay sports. Um and these two positions are part time, so I'll start with uh sports coordinator, um right now. We're gonna be looking for, or hopefully you guys approve, looking for a uh part time sports coordinator position. Um reason why we're doing part time is to see. If everything goes well, or maybe thinking about equal time, um eventually you will probably have to look into a full time position for this. Uh. For sports, it's um a lot of work I've been doing it was definitely for a couple of weeks, today I was. Doing a couple of things, and it was six hours of going back and forth on different screens, um. So hopefully everything goes well, um I was learning full time, but right now I'm asking for part time, that's a thousand hours per national year, so that's July, so June. Um the hourly rate will be between two, three and thirty, thirty three, that line for our full time. Recruitment coordinator, um salary, we're going to keep the same salary, but it will just be part time, uh there's no benefits, I've um fifty oversee. Um your personal plan organized, oversee you playing adult sports, uh I put off what's there to have some meaning, that's already shown. That you want to do adult sports, um softball, so we would rent that out or. Their contract was then, and they would run the whole around, we're charging them a rate or rental, um so this coordinator would oversee that. Um and then they'll have to understand for tools played for youth and adult sports, um they have to be flexible, uh their shifts are more than maybe five weeks a week. Uh for people now. Any questions on coordinators, on the one? And then sports official, uh current standing, uh part time, sports official position, no more than a thousand per hour in staff this year. Um it'll be between twenty five to thirty, uh. Salary, but it would be per game, um no benefits, I can sit doing sports, uh force rule to play for youth and adult sports. Uh supervise and control the games, uh me and Dave, the principal, your formative shift, fits. And then has to be flexible, um and they will have even shifts off. So tonight I'm actually uh take out those to uh approve the sports and. The sports coordinator and the sports official are drop subscription, uh that way we can start um recruiting and then add in from. Are there any questions or just?
And we got them before, okay.
You're currently listening, we're getting seventy thousand guaranteed from the school, and we're charging the PD fifty dollars, twenty five per sport, and then we have another thirty thousand. So with everything. If it goes to plan, um that's maybe about five hundred dollars off it, or black, um. So yeah, it just all depends on registration, everything, but with the seventy thousand, um should be okay. But we'll know until. We run the league.
There's only going to be one sports official?
No, it'll be more than, yeah, it'll be a bunch of them, yeah.
This is just to add it. Okay, perfect. Okay, fine, I see, hold on. Okay.
For clarification, I don't remember, um first, was that nine hundred and sixty dollars? Do we need to adjust that down to nine sixty so that these part time employees are not possible?
Yeah, we, we got.
Hmm.
He's a guy.
But I think it's for sure for retired, I mean, I'm, I'll make sure I'm with that number for. For part time. I want to approve this sports coordinator for a people drop subscription. Um we should.
Yeah, so uh we take public comments and give the case of fifty four or more.
So. Okay, that would come, there's a comment. I hope we're going to volunteer for Zee, you know, uh. I'm sorry, I had a question, we have a money for. And then uh also we uh told that we stayed about the mention and reverse, so those are really good questions uh. That were presented, so I think it's great that we have uh young people being involved, especially at a very young age, I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure that we do the right thing with my, thank you. Anyone want to comment? No, I just think that it's cool. So we do have a motion.
I said, I just want that. Probably would be the full time.
We have a motion for Boris. Uh, second by uh Coria, Al David?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, most serious.
Yeah. I think for outside.
Yes.
Beautiful picture of things now. Okay, moving on to actual items. Uh you got fifteen point one and fifteen point two. Okay, we got a fifteen point three, a working of the city clerk, and this is by Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, uh hi, we're very pleased to have uh our new city clerk to be uh the store for a lot of town. Hey, um. Fun, it's uh certainly going to Lindsay night, and uh we've got lots of experience in human resources, uh they're working in the area now. And uh thought it was a great opportunity to actually skip some of this earth, so uh I won't speak too much more, um y'all are aware of what. Role of the city clerk here is, we last by this procedure uh in the spring, so it is a city clerk slash uh human resource manager, which is uh very common for. Our side to have a role, um so uh that's. Care of new words uh prior to the campaign.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, um I am excited to be your new city clerk and HR, I just ask that you have patience. Because it is the learning process, that's all.
Well, welcome, and we, we appreciate you, and we're going to be patient for some more. You're a little still. Who know your heart is. I just want to say that I saw me for this series, it's a high school, and he said hi to me, because he doesn't know that, it's not who talks to me yet. So it was. I was like. But he was the best kid, he offered them, so. You're welcome, we're happy to have you here.
Welcome, and we are very happy, I actually, um I think this is last week, last week, I think it's four, first hour of the.
Yes.
Second day, so no, I really appreciate you deciding to take up this uh. This role because the digital town involved, I had some turnover and yeah, so I'm uh. Some learning, uh part of. We very appreciate you, because we got some of our other staff and focus on, on growing our community, on giving investing and making sure that we look for the future. And I appreciate the fact that you're from Lindsay and I know that you're going to be well.
And I just want to um say thank you to Dolly for hanging in there for me.
I always. That very. I see they're really uh have different strengths, and they're very complimenting. Don't put on this meeting, um from the big earlier and going together with both, uh I've already done some top chatting with other courts. Um uh getting involved in some sort of training on the website and so, and I really glad to do the. Very things in the, in this.
Awesome.
Just as a wire.
We have a motion for fifteen point three. I know the first fifteen point three. I think I was the donate, um Boris Al David?
Hi.
What carries by me?
Moving on to fifteen point four. That is a brilliant by Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um this is like uh last meeting, we had um some authorization to release our queues for IP services and for new auditors. Tonight we have one for lobbying services. Many cities uh have uh lobbyists, um that help advocate on behalf of the cities, uh oftentimes the lobbyists will help, uh perhaps. Well, that is like a platform, so as um the state, it's California. Regularly passing laws and regulations that have a direct impact on all of our departments. Uh in Lindsay, uh this would be another added voice that we were having, just through our representatives, uh in the Sacramento. Help finance us, uh they would prevent ideas and often for this council, uh as well as helping with your official funding. Um they would um win their grant, uh application then, helping to get through the pass finish line if there were regular foreign issues. Uh that may be uh having with certain agencies, uh whether at a state level or at regional level, uh they're an added voice, they're an added. Bit of opportunities to help us get through some of those uh counts, so um. It's, I think uh this would help us, um there would be a cost uh associated with it, and we're anticipating uh annually roughly sixty thousand dollars. Um that that would work off, I think, uh long term, that. Provide at least twelve dollars in form of funding and very rewarding that, um that will help us, you know, um. So um we're not uh asking, we're not making any selection now, we have our authority to be able to put this out and put this out again, uh see return.
Um I'm figuring out the members, like it's a great idea, and we'll have a very better idea of what our members would want, um in the next coming years.
Well, I think we uh we wanted to report in uh the city man's uh professional.
I'm not saying that this is a good idea, but we have to start thinking about that, you, our term might only be four years, or we might, we might only serve one term. Or two terms, but we really got to start thinking about same years, and that's, that's how we're going to do it, right, the basic like in, in Lindsay. And we have a lot, we have the opportunity to choose a lot, you, someone that's going to help us find those funds that can help us invest in our community over the course of the next few years. It's time, I'm moving to kind of now, one of the, the session. It's his time, I'm going to go into Carolina again, one of the sessions that I attended in Lindsay was the importance of having. Uh lobbyists, right, someone that you understand, someone that you know, so we wanna make sure that we do make selections, uh that. Know who we are, but we know what work they're doing, what uses it to, what what actions they're actually doing to help us. So we can have a return on our investment, ultimately that's a service that we expect them to come, right? We contact with first, expect at least a ten or plus six hundred thousand dollar grant, right, that's what we need. That's what I think we can do if we hire an appropriate lobbyist, someone that you're seeing in small cities. And there is, again, uh some that love to see a lot of our sessions, there is specific lobbyists that. Are specialized in small cities, certain cities that are like twenty thousand, so that's something that we should consider, we should just go. With the biggest or the one that is cheapest, but someone that has an experience, if we decide to do that with lobbyists. That someone that has an experience working with city law signs, I might not doubt this.
Well, we also must be careful, because there are a lot of lawyers that focus on small cities for our reasons. So I don't wanna be particularly, particularly down with, but I wanna, you know, a lot of people that. Try to pick the right. So, and what we're really thinking about this is that we want to return people for a couple of years. There's ideas, and most of us will be here, so it's 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 a tricky situation. And that's on test, I mean, we just have to really earn that them, we just wanna be excited.
And that's why I said we need, if if we decide to go with someone, we need to make sure that they give us a report, right? Um finally, quarterly reports, like, so who are you from, if you have any, and it's, have you met? Have you met with, um you know, the the governor's office? And and what are you doing, what was coming down the pipeline that you shouldn't know about, we need to cover where all of that, but sometimes these lobbyists. They know what's happening for it's approved, so they can kind of give us some insight, some information, and that's. That's what holds out, right, to hold out is is to find out information for early discovery. Uh again, some of the, some of this is something that I think the city, so I'm also, I could really understand, I might think that we should have. Accountability and you should have a plan to hold them accountable for any type of improvement that.
And you have a motion for fifteen point four, uh I need that, Tyler.
I really believe in Lindsay, Lindsay's like now, and I wanna see it grow, I think it's a great idea. Has Lindsay been a fight, has, that's why I get her, her breaths, because I was on the spoken, but that was going forward. So I, I.
Anyone have a comment? Their comment is closed, and I begin a motion for fifteen point four.
I'm also making some comments for the authorization, issue are due request of completion of our legislative law services.
My motion for Coria, I said you do that this, all favor.
Hi.
Hi. Moving on to fifteen point five, the waiver of late meeting for easily billed affected by water, um quantity charged and misread. This is uh so good advice on that.
Thank you very much, Mayor, um we had um some unfortunate situations happen. Where the water is consumption is not being that correct, that has been technically real. It's it is even better, but now we have residents who have acquired um very large stuff. It's been accumulating over five to six or maybe longer months of consumption, and so what's happening is that. Um we normally charge ten dollar rate fee if the bill is not paid for the company for them. So this uh staff report is asking is, can we waive the ten dollar rate fee? So that the residents have time to pay their bill, but do not have to pay the ten dollar rate.
Okay, the comment is fifteen point five, I was gonna find that.
You bought the money, seven hundred.
You have other comments? So at this time it's closed, are there any questions, concerns, statements?
All right, good question, this is only for those that did. To the under year.
That's correct, this is waiting the late fee for only the region that was affected, and only waiting the late. From now, maybe end of December of twenty twenty five, so it would not be waiting there for any. Um residents who are not affected who have, their husband given that properly, and um. Or anybody who just doesn't want to pay the one time.
I think this is a, a really good act, and I was just taking and showing the community that. What do you think about it, you know, we made a mistake, and you know, we only have to take it off in the mouth, so I appreciate it, so um.
Um I don't understand about five to six months, but I mean, are you saying that they weren't paying? Their reader was being made, and they're worth paying in them, or let's say five months are. Not being metered and not being paid, that they were trying to make. So everybody's water bill has two parts to it, the first one is the cost of just having a water. And that's your first chart, the second chart is based on the consumption and how much water you're realizing. On a method basis, the bill that was being received by the residents of the central area. It will only be charts for the for the meter, not for the consumption, the consumption was not being read properly. So the residents paid the meter fee, but they didn't read the consumption. Okay, so how much were the, everybody get the? It varies depending on the size of the meter, it starts at just over forty dollars, and it varies. Going up based on how they the meter, or the um I guess that's the news. So, um the if they were only paying a beer fee, they were receiving a bill of forty dollars for the water. They're not, not consumption, so we're not red from what, the right news. So on the consumption, on the bill, there's a consumption number, no, yes? I just have to verify this, I wanna say this, I wanna say your. I wanna say yes.
Some of the ones, the bill that was sent was, maybe it was that same, the same meter reading, and it was eighteen dollars.
Mm-hmm, and it was just, it's. So then it does have a, it does have a.
Yeah, and 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 I think like it, uh Missy and I brought that up too, to you.
Wow.
To the manager, about how the bill was.
So.
Missy, and understanding that the numbers don't add up, or I don't know, you guys can think that. Um but we can bring it up, it's just like, look, it says I used seventeen thousand gallons for the link, and I'm like. They don't understand what it, you know, so uh but but the ones that was sent to us. Like I say, like five eight water divertment.
That's.
Right, the meter, yes, but it doesn't, it's not very specific, so.
So I've only been looking at the reports that were printed as the customer that turned in. And we discussed how the consumption has looked over the last five, six, ten, twelve months. So I haven't seen an actual bill, so that's why I'm telling you about the report. I'm just asking that, I mean, we're not in court, if there's a zero consumption on the, on the, I'm not in court. One, two, um if my my worry is, I'm not saying that we're not giving, giving them enough time. But what is the amount that they would prove in a month? That we're asking, well, if we're not, we're not gonna charge you the ten dollars, but are we giving them enough time to pay? The five months plus, what they're paying now, one, is my concern. So I like to look, we're not giving them enough time, but they, so what I already told my staff is to check when the consumption. Stop giving red, or giving red properly, if they have five months, give them five months, if they have six months, give them six. If it's twelve months, give them the amount of time that it has taken, that they their consumption did not go that. And so those are the um generally, generally, the customers as a tool, so if they give you the left, not paying over the midpoint. Of whatever, okay, and so most of them, it it looks like it's about the five, six month period. That's the reason that I said I am requesting, we can wait the late fee all through December. Because most of the ones that we've seen, that's the kind of. So are we divided that or not? Because we're saying we're giving five months, or no five months, we're giving five years, completely okay, that has to be the rest for. And from the customers that have come in, um are they okay with it, or what what is that? That. So, see, what is working, you know, or is there making a bigger plan? Yes, so of course they're very upset, and then we do the charges, how the consumption has happened, or what didn't happen. We offer them the possibility and availability of us and out somebody to lead the manager. Make sure the leader is doing correctly, that the numbers we now have are correct. And then we're giving them the opportunity if they want, to extend that bill that they have. Over the period of time that we just let them do it, in the consumption goal, some of the um. Customers moving in or residents, they are being the bill, and others are saying, I can't. A lot of them say, I don't even use water, then they say, oh, but I do have, you know, some plants, and I do have straightforward, and I do have. You know, animals, so then it's just, I think part of it is when we think of using water, we think of like. Um water with the plants, but we forget that it's also like, around the closet, you want the food, you want dishes, and so now. We're gonna try to move it like a charger, like, it's not just one thing that is water. It also gives all the same things, and five months, I think that's a great idea, that, so when it gives, um, on the point. Thing is not that happens to me, and it was all wrong. And I, and it actually happened at the time when the issue happened, but actually didn't have, um somebody did come out. They checked the meter, they very politely, very nice, we showed we look, we are locked it, locked it, so now what you're making? Something is running in your, for the, and I'm like, oh, no, 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 oh, yeah, and then he's having fun, something was running, like, oh, I. But it's, you know, it's, then we don't know how much like, I mean, how much water is waste. By just, um you know, just these giving, the point is just, you know, running and not. So that's a, that's a tip for anybody that doesn't know, it will, it will be by a lot, so I would.
Alright, do we have a motion for fifteen point five? I move to a private. I have a motion for me, the second contention is all favor, alright, bye.
Let's say very wide, yeah.
At this time, we have a request for future items. You know, I just got one of those announcements today, is there a major reconsidering, or a muster?
There is, scheduled to be a review tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, that's about, it's great, so, okay, it's all great, so. And I um, I talked briefly with, I mean. Let's go talk about this, uh Lindsay in fact asking for like some baby, this is what I was gonna say, maybe like a baby foot. Yellow drop off zone at the area of East End, I'm sorry, of Cervi or East End. I know that we have to bring it to council, and then also um for a red. Uh to give it for red at uh Denver and Harvard, um so that the bus can can make the turn. I know that I knew a lot where there's not going to be anybody hurt, what, twenty? Twenty two from the crosswalk, um so I'm not sure how we're gonna address that, but I I do wanna bring it up. To council because they want um people to come and, and all that stuff, and I put on, you, you know. I asked about that too, I had a bit to do with that, um, when they want. And I, it is contested, it's a safety issue, so.
Uh this is an awareness, people, I see.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I was just a little bit loud. We have more questions, you guys? At this time, it's me, it's there, how did I?